I'm calling this regular meeting of the Ellsworth Planning Board to order. This is Wednesday, November 1st, 2017. With us tonight are, if you could introduce yourselves from starting down at the end here.
Mike Howie.
John DeLeo.
Daryl Wilson.
Jim Markhouse.
Roger Loossey.
Chairman Fink is not with us tonight, so I'll be running the meeting tonight. So the first item of business is the adoption of the minutes from the October 4th, 2017 meeting.
Joe Boo.
I do have something that I would like to revise slightly in the minutes. And it has to do with the wording in the motion regarding the waiver language around the fire department items. So I think it should be rewritten to read that the items in parentheses should read, "The fire department seems to be on board with the 14-foot right-of-way pending flow that will be provided later." So I would like to amend those minutes to be as that. Is there any other items that people wanted to comment on in the minutes? Any other corrections or revisions? Okay, is there a motion regarding those, adoption of those minutes then?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 4th meeting.
I'll second it.
Seconded? All those in favor? Okay, those have been passed. I would like to make a note for the record that in that motion, we granted a waiver that is outside the jurisdiction of the planning board. It has to do with the 14-foot right-of-way. So we're going to plan to correct this with an agenda item on a future meeting. We've discussed it and we have an approach, and so we're going to put it on the agenda and correct that. It was something more that the fire inspector was responsible for, so we have a plan to correct that. Just to make a note. Okay. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. This is final plan for a modification to an approved subdivision and the creation of a minor subdivision and of a major-use site development titled Our Way Development-Holt Industrial Park Amendment for Danny J. and Teresa M. Quinlan. The proposal is to A, split 2.65-acre parcel off the Bucksport Road, tax map lot 26-2, into two lots, both including one residential structure, and add two apartment units to the existing duplex; and B, split a 3.72-acre parcel accessed off of Our Way, tax map lot 26-2-4, into two lots, both including a residential structure in the urban zone. We are here to have a public hearing, deliberation, finding of facts, and conclusion. Is there someone representing the applicant?
Steven Salisbury. I've provided revised plans showing the existing end, the two new proposed water lines that were on a separate plan for. We just incorporated that all through one plan that you'll sign. Lots 1-2 and 1-3 are getting new water facilities. And that's where we are.
All right. Does the board have questions for the applicant?
Steve, the easement to the neighbor Meeks, is that shown on these plans as it's written in that agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, has that been signed?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet. The attorneys are working out the details. It's taking forever.
Any other questions from the board?
Well, I guess I wouldn't mind hearing from Mrs. Meeks, excuse me, to see what she thinks of what has transpired with the easement, if she's happy with the way that is progressing.
May I speak now?
Yes, yes, please.
Sure, I'd like to open up the public meeting at this point for Mrs. Meeks to come up to the podium and...
I wrote this up because as of this afternoon, there has now been change that I feel needs to be made, and perhaps the whole of my gentlemen. Gentlemen, where do I stand now if you approve this plan? Do I have the original easement which goes past the Quillens' front door? Would I have to remove the fence to get to my house? To be fair, the Quillens' attorney has proposed an easement drawn up and based on Mr. Salisbury's new survey. That survey takes a new easement through two lots. Lot 1-1 has a small piece which Ms. Geno pointed out at a previous meeting is just not right. What had to be discovered is that the Quillens have two lenders, Cataden Trust and Dan McClellan. Cataden Trust has agreed to the easement, but Mr. McClellan has not as of yet. There may be two reasons for that. Mr. Quillen had not informed Acadia Law Group attorney Allison King about the McClellan mortgage, but that she had to be told that by my attorney. Number two, Acadia Law Group may not have known about the second lender, but did not include the following up on getting Mr. McClellan's approval for the new easement. These attempts at getting a new easement will have cost me a considerable expense that I should not have to pay because the Quillens want to subdivide their property for sale or other uses that interfere with my right-of-way. I believe if this subdivision is approved, I will not be left whole until the impediments to the new easement are resolved. And what can compel the Quillens to redesign lot 1-1 for a new easement, or whatever it would take to clear this, which should have been simple, matter up? So that's... I still have, as of today, not really had a clear easement to my property.
So I guess my question is, we were provided with a printout of an agreement or an easement that had a significant amount of geographical detail in it?
That's right, I have that.
And that, so you're saying that that's not going to work for you, or it hasn't been executed yet?
It would work for me if Mr. McClellan agreed to it because he has a mortgage interest on that part of the property, is my understanding.
So your interest is to get all the proper signatures on that?
Correct. Cataden Trust has agreed, but Mr. McClellan has, we may not even know, you know, how to get to Mr. McClellan.
So it's been constructed properly, it just needs people to buy into it and sign it?
I'm sorry?
That agreement?
That structured agreement?
It's properly put together, it just needs to write signatures on it, is that what you're saying?
No, it's still not properly put together. Because there's an issue of that fence that needed to be added, and Ms. King of Acadia Law Group was agreed to do that, but then she realized that she needed to get this approval from the second lender.
Okay.
And I tried to contact her today, but could not reach her.
Okay, thank you. Is there more that you would like to add?
No, no. Just that that is not the final description.
Okay. Noted, thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to step up and make a comment about this item? I'm going to close the public hearing. We could reopen it, I guess. But for now, I'd like to hear what the... What questions the city staff has for the applicant?
All right. The water lines were all good with that. The only remaining thing would be the easement agreement with Mrs. Meeks. On the plan that you were presented previously, there was a language, there was, on the notes, there was a line that stated, "Existing right-of-way to Meeks will be extinguished in favor of new easement." I'm not a lawyer, but when that was written there, it would be my contention that it would be hard to proceed, for the planning board, hard to proceed forward unless that, you can't just extinguish an easement without the agreement of all the parties. So when that note was written in there, then it seemed to be an automatic tie to the planning board where that would need to be resolved. That was taken, the applicant did not need to put that in there, and the applicant removed that, so I think that now is not on the table like it used to be. One thing that Mrs. Meeks didn't mention that I had not thought about, and I'm not sure if it has any repercussion, is that she did hire a lawyer and she has spent money to embark on something that maybe she felt more confident in embarking as she felt there was a process around it. Definitely now, that process is kind of not the same. So I think that's for the board to contend with. She, I did not... I scanned that agreement, I did not read in detail, had not noticed that the fence was not there. But she did have mentioned to me that the fence was an issue in the past. She did take the time to write an email to me, I think feeling quite, I don't want to speak on her behalf, but, you know, I don't have feeling lost, but definitely feeling as there was a letdown to what was trying to be accomplished.
Okay. I hear what you're saying. I guess I would like to hear from the applicant on your, I guess, response to those items, or where you think we're at with that.
I believe it's going to be completed at some point. Whether it's this easement or not, she has rights to her property, so... In whether or not we came to this planning board with amendment, that easement needed to be corrected one way or the other anyway. So only to her benefit to get that resolved. And my client's benefit, too. Everybody should know exactly where the right-of-way is, instead of just the generic language that was contained in the deed now.
Steve, what about the fence that Mrs. Meeks is referring to? Is that noted on the plans here? Is that the fence that she's talking about?
Yes.
And is that on her land?
No.
I mean...
It's on my client's land.
Okay. Mrs. Meeks, is it your fence?
It's my fence. It was prepared to prevent children, his children from running across the roads. And that's what he wanted. The error was mine, in that I didn't realize exactly where the line is, so my line is two and a half feet in from that.
I see that from the plans. Are you trying to get it moved back onto your property, is that?
No, I just, I had hoped that we could just, you know, clear it up with just acknowledgement that the fence was okay by him and that, you know, the right-of-way was now a separate driveway, which is well described by, you know, by the survey. But the complication is that there's another mortgage holder that crosses just a little tiny triangle there. And it's my belief from the attorneys that you need to have the approval of lenders when you change an easement.
Yeah, okay. Now, you said that the right-of-way went through the fence?
No, the fence was not there before. The right-of-way went right in front of Mr. Quillen's house to my garage.
Right.
And he did not want that because he has several children.
Okay. So the fence is good where it is?
Well, I mean, if I have to move the fence two and a half feet, I guess I have to move it. But if he would just say it's okay, you know, as part of this whole agreement?
Okay.
It would be much nicer.
Okay. Thank you. Steve, is that something that the owner will maybe add into something?
We've already, we agreed to that two months ago.
So the language that I find in the ordinance says, "For any proposed easement, the developer shall submit a proposed easement language with a signed statement certifying that the easement will be executed upon approval of the development." So that is for... These are the standards for a preliminary plan, and we're at final plan. So we need to figure out some way that... Maintaining that the easement will be executed upon approval of the development. How are we going to get to that point? Do we need to make, does the board need to make a condition?
Well, we can't because it's a little mortgage over there.
Right, if he says no.
You know, it's not our job to find out whether he's going to accept it or not.
Yeah, I kind of want to, like, I understand that it's a complex issue, but, you know, the different, like, details, the elements of it don't concern me as much as an easement that is being executed. And clearly, there's some hurdles to that. I'm open to suggestions as to what action you think the board would take here.
I'd take it pretty black and white. I mean, do we have an approved easement or language document saying it's going to be approved? No. So we're a position of a board, how can we, you know, that was conditional for final, that we have a signed easement, we don't have one. I feel that we can't approve this until we do. I mean, we can find the end around for it, but...
Well, I don't think we can find the end around it.
I don't think we can.
Because it's legal hands, I mean...
I mean, maybe you can hypothetically put a condition in it as approved only if it's signed off by everybody for that right-of-way. But if it doesn't move forward until you have it signed off, and we'll have to still see it again.
Can we, all right, so can we do final plan with that item as, I don't know, table that item or something, or is there parts of this that we can complete now? And then, and make that execution of that easement, you know, that will be the piece that finally gives them the approval? I'm just trying to find a way to get through the work that we have to do and leave that item to be resolved, instead of just making that one item stop everything.
I think that one item is going to stop it.
Yeah, that's right, so I...
So you don't feel like there's any benefit to try and go part, through any other parts of the final plan and just leave that one thing to be contended with? I think that's a waste? Okay?
Well, I think it's better than in the ordinance.
I mean, I think everything else would pass scrutiny, except for the easement. I mean, you could go down through the checklist and say everything else is okay, but I think without the easement issue being settled, I don't, I would not be comfortable voting to approve it.
I guess I would ask the city, what do you think the implications are if we don't approve this until that easement is executed?
The implications, I mean, I can't answer to that. I like where you're going, but in my mind, there's one question that's not resolved, and I think you can argue this different ways. Steve Salisbury has mentioned that he's working on an agreement for a new easement, so that's clear that that's in the works. So someone can hang their hat and say, "Okay, as is it presented today, we can pass it based on that." That I'm okay with. On the flip side, I think that one could make an argument, and I'm being the...
Okay, sure, that's what I'm asking.
On the flip side, one could say, "The easements, as they exist today, are depicted correctly on the plan." One could say, "The fact that the fence is on the wrong side is not material, it's a civil matter." And one could say, "Because he took off that line, he could go ahead." So I think you can argue it both ways. You could argue it saying, "He clearly has stated and demonstrated that a revised easement is in the works." Or you could say, "That's not material." You can do how you feel you want to do on this one. I think you can argue this both ways. That's not what you wanted to hear.
Mr. Salisbury, would you care to add anything to these deliberations?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay.
Can I add one thing?
Sure.
I think it's clear that there's an intent to clarify everything. I think it's clear that everybody will win from having this clarified. One, we will be lenient, the other, we will motivate things to get done faster, I think.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And I understand what everyone is saying here tonight. But I think if there's any doubt in the board's mind, then this probably should be tabled. Because if this is signed tonight, it could be registered tomorrow, okay? And what teeth do we have to make sure this right-of-way gets carried out the way it's supposed to get carried out? I have no teeth, because we've approved it. And even if you approved it with a condition that they had to come to the code enforcement office, we're probably not going to be issuing much of a permit on this for a while. And that would be our teeth. So, you know, just take in mind, if you have any doubts, this might be a time to set a table until we can get all the...
Okay.
I would, if you're going to go that road, which I really respect, I would think that you would want to table it. Because you're not supposed to be advertising lots in a subdivision that has not been approved. And I think that could be then a bit murky. For sale, you're not supposed to advertise for sale lots in a subdivision that has not been approved. So the question, has it been approved or not approved, if it's approved conditions?
Okay, I'm not going to...
It's another thing for you guys to consider.
I'm not going to let that be pressure on me to approve. I understand what you just said.
Well, question ahead, what I'm hearing is, I mean, do we vote and deny it, or do we table it?
I'm thinking that the board needs to vote on that.
No, but what I liked, what I heard, what Dwight had mentioned is that this is good motivation, let's get the easement squared up. That there's no guarantees that that easement ever will. Then maybe this is our chance to allow that to happen.
Okay.
But if you deny it, you can't, he can't represent the project and it's formed for a certain amount of time, and the project is fine.
That's my question. Is the difference between table and item?
Procedure, what we do, how does that affect the applicant?
Well, I think in the... Last month, I made a motion to table it because of the easement issue.
And the water lines.
And the water lines. I mean, the easement issue was still there. I mean, I'd be comfortable making that motion to table it.
Okay. If I could open the public hearing again for just a minute, Mrs. Meeks, you had some comments you'd like to make?
Yeah, I think this is like one of those Solomon-like things. I have to ask the surveyor, if the driveway is moved clearly onto the lot where Mr. Quillen's house is, and no longer has that little piece in the second lot, would that change anything?
What little piece in the second lot do you refer to?
Lot 1-1 is where there's a little corner where the easement goes into the second lot. So the easement would be crossing two lots.
No, you've got to cross two lots, no matter what.
Yeah, I... It's going to cross two lots no matter what, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Substantially.
So that doesn't make any difference, then? Because, I mean, I was willing to move the driveway over slightly if it would just be on the one lot, and it wouldn't confuse things, but I think the confusion is the second mortgage holder.
Okay, that's... Yes, sir. If you could just state your name, please.
Good evening. Jeffrey Dyer, owner of the campground next door, Forest Ridge Campground. I just wanted to inform the planning board of a, this past summer, Mr. McClellan, the previous owner of all the properties, the campground and the four lots that they're trying to subdivide, came and stayed at our campground for two nights. And he expressed not concern, but high interest in the Quinlan's sale of the property. Because when the Quinlan's bought the property, they bought it as one piece with four buildings. The four buildings had two mortgages, one with Cataden and one with owner financing. Mr. McClellan told me this summer that the balloon payment for the owner financing is coming due in the spring of next year.
Oh, okay.
Which technically, he could foreclose on if the McClellans don't come up with the balloon, the Quinlan's don't come up with the balloon payment.
Okay.
So I think it's important that you have to get the signature from the McClellans because they have a high stake in this property.
All right, understood. Thank you for that background. Anyone else from the public that would like to comment on this matter? I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask the members of the board if there is a motion regarding this item.
I'll make a motion that we table it for another month. Do you want me to put in the time, or just a...
Till they get the signatures.
Okay, motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second it? Is there any further discussion?
What is the motion exactly?
Are we tabling it until the right-of-way is agreed on all parties?
I'd ask for some guidance from the board.
Well, I think I would go back to what you said last minute, table until the agreement for the easement with Mrs. Meeks is executed.
Agreement executed?
Yep.
Does that seem fair?
I mean, those things coming in another month if the easement hasn't been signed.
Okay. So that is the motion. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Like we have to keep the motion?
All right, so the next item on the agenda is also under the unfinished business column. This is a review, condition of approved major subdivision titled Village for Roy Meeks. The approved project consists of a 12-lot cluster land subdivision off the Bucksport Road and the Atlantic Highway located on a 140-acre parcel, tax map lot 4619. located on a hundred and forty acre parcel, tax map lot forty-six nineteen, in the drinking water zone. The item was in, the item was tabled last meeting? Can't find my notes. Signature blocks be added, stamp letter, like to- Yeah, so the notes here say review site distance condition and the turnaround.
Yes. Which we've been working on since that meeting, and came to resolution with the memo that Michelle put out a few days ago, called the site visibility. Seems like we've all agreed to two hundred and seventy-five feet, which we can fit within the road as planned.
Okay, and there's a set of, just so that everybody knows, there's a revised drawing that was given out.
And we also asked, we also like to change the location of the turnaround at the end of the road, shortening the road. That was done through request of the DEP, when they reviewed the stormwater for the whole project.
Okay.
So that we need to bring back to you, because that's the way we show it now, isn't what we looked at last month.
What are you looking for? Just making sure I had the correct-
No, the copies.
You see the turnaround is here, and across lot nine now. We're taking it around beyond lot nine to a Y. So we shorten the road, we T turnaround.
Okay. It was my understanding that the fire inspector had a chance to review that change?
Yes.
And you're all with that?
We're all, we're okay with that.
Okay. Are there other questions from the board about these two specific things?
As long as the city's okay with the two seventy-three, you guys went out there and looked at it, and two seventy-five, and-
We're still on that deal.
I just, so there's one thing in the-
Yeah, but somebody never got off the pavement.
Okay, were there minutes of this meeting?
Yes, it's in the pink memo.
Yes.
Oh, right, the pink memo.
Okay, so I was going to add something that was off topic, so I'm not going to say it.
Yes.
The last thing that's remaining in the memo, so Steve and I had some emails, and I said, Steve, why did you not address the, kind of the visibility area? There's a clump of trees at the junction of Atlantic Highway and the Bucksport Road. And Bruce Mattson, as stated in the memo, was asked, would you accept this road with a side distance? And he said, yes, if you move it towards the hydrant, and yes, if you provide for vegetation basically clearance or maintenance of new vegetation. So I asked Steve why he didn't do it, and Steve said, well, I can't ask, I can't put an easement on land that doesn't belong to me. I was like, oh, okay. And so I did ask the state, and the state from the email, I'm sure that Steve will agree, was very- Agreement, a license. And it would be mostly granted if the city asked for it. So basically, it would be just to maintain that vegetation kind of cut. And then, once they forget to recut it and goes too high, then you could go and get, you know, remind them that you need to cut it down. So that could be a condition, is that there's a, there's a license obtained for the maintenance of visibility clearance area. Would that be adequate, Steve?
That's what it would be, yep.
Now, the wooded section, is that something the applicant would cut down?
Maintain.
Cut it down initially, you guys would take care of that.
So you said it really well, initially.
Yeah.
So initially, it'd be cut down. We all know that the likeliness that that's going to be maintained over time is, but at least there's a way to say, hey, you know, if the snow banks and it gets too high, then you have a way to say, no, you need to go cut that back down, so.
So I guess the first question is, is can that email be made part of the record somehow? Or second question is, can that be noted on the plan somehow?
With a license, yes, yes, I think-
Well, we don't know exactly what the state's going to give us. I'd be reluctant, it may take a few months to get that from the state.
Yeah, I would just want some sort of record of that, so that when somebody reviews these plans in three years, oh, look, the state maintains that. I'm not really sure how you would do that. It's not part of the stormwater, it's not part of the-
We call it a visibility triangle usually. Not sure if that one's going to be a triangle, it's going to be more of a visibility-
Is there a maintenance plan for the stormwater that would, or the vegeta, or the, I don't know, I'm just trying to attach it to something in the project?
Well, it's within the city's right of way, they can always trim it back. We have not issued, this is kind of complicated, we have not issued an entrance permit yet.
Okay.
Because the project, they built the road before I came to the planning board. And we explained, I explained to the owner, the developer, that was a risk. So because there was no planning board, so we still had to collect the fee and issue that entrance permit, and we can make that a condition on our-
We can tie it with that, excellent.
Entrance permit, okay.
Good thinking.
Yeah, woke up.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So was-
You can go back.
Was Bruce an MDOT, is he part of that entrance permit, or is that all you guys?
It's a town, it's a city road, so it's ours.
So his comment about, oh, I'd, would you allow the road, that was, that was a question for Bruce, like if this was a state road?
Well, it was a question to me, was with his expertise in engineering and doing, doing this for a living, allowing curb cuts and entrances, would he allow that road?
Okay, and he said yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Yes, but cut those trees, so that's sort of what drove, okay.
I mean, Bruce was very helpful, I mean, I think-
You're lucky, he was-
I was too.
You were working. You got me out of my woodshed.
Okay. That wasn't in the memo. Okay, so these are really the two things here that we're discussing. We have already gone through the rest of the plan, the final plan. What was the, so where are we with this final plan? Did we table something, or did we approve it?
So you had, approved with condition, and the discussion that was there was what happens if it doesn't pan out? And the answer was like, we're not going to sign the model, but Steve and I decided that putting a placeholder in the agenda for this reason would be good, so.
All right, so it was independent review of site distance, and that's really the, the other items have been addressed, correct?
It was down to that one issue.
But you did approve a plan that's different than this, A, where the road is, and B, where the turnaround is.
Turnaround is.
So you have to make sure that the previous approval is no longer good. This is, this plan dated October twenty-seven is the one that you're approving.
You're going to give your blessing to that turnaround change at the end, definitely.
Okay.
Even though you approved it last time we moved it, so.
So there's really three, it seems like there's three things here. One is the turnaround. The second one is the relocation of the mouth of the road, which is shown in the plans. And then the third thing is the condition of the entrance permit, being the clearing of that clump of land. And the city's going to pursue a license. All other items of the final plan have already been reviewed and approved, so I don't believe that we need to go back through all of that material again. So is, this is a public meeting? Is there anybody who would like to speak on this item from the public? Yes, ma'am.
I just have a really cool question.
Sure.
Where, I'm just late in the game.
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, Nadine Lewis. Where is this? Where's the entrance to the road?
Entrance to the road is off of the Bucksport Road as you turn onto Atlantic. It'll be on the right-hand side, about two hundred and seventy-five feet down on the right.
Turn onto Atlantic?
Atlantic Highway. Atlantic Highway, it's a, it's a road that goes down amongst a lot of houses off of the Bucksport Road.
It connects onto the Happy Town Road. If you go into the Happy Town, there's that road on the right that comes through and back out on the Bucksport Road.
Oh, it's that little short road?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay, so it's not coming right out?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else from the public wish to comment? Okay, I'm going to close the public. The public hearing is now closed. What would the board like to do with this item? Is there a motion regarding this?
I'll try it. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we let's say that approve the final plan that Steve has supplied us with the new turnaround at the end of the road, the new site distance of the two seventy-five, and that the permit by the town for the access road to include the clearing along the public road, and that we approve this village subdivision.
Okay. Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Nice. All right. Next item on the agenda. We are in the new business column now. Sketch plan for a major site, major use, site development plan, and major subdivision plan for Atlantic Landscape Construction. The proposed concept is to build five self-storage buildings to include a total of about three hundred storage units, and construct four residential duplexes, total of eight units. At one hundred and twenty-four Bangor Road, formerly the New Land Nursery and Landscaping, located on a nine point five acre parcel, tax map lot fifty, lot sixty-eight in the urban zone. Someone representing the advocate?
Steve Salisbury.
Good evening.
Get out of here very shortly. This is the area of town where the project is, between the Christian Road and Agon Road, and where the two-way nursery was. This is a property nine and a half acres. The existing office, former office sits there. This is where all the landscaping used to be stored. These are where we propose to put the storage lockers. The five buildings potentially containing about three hundred individual lockers. We have eight duplex home units, four duplexes containing a total of eight units in the back of the property. We will probably bring in new water and sewer services along the existing road on the lower side, because there's the potential of being less bedrock in that area. And that water sewer will service the duplexes.
There are a number of accesses to this property. Is there-
There are.
An effort to consolidate, reduce?
There is.
Prioritize?
There is. There's an existing entrance here, we're going to move a little bit towards town, fifty feet, sixty feet, or something like that. Just because it gets you on top of the hill, and you can maintain very good visibility north and south. The middle entrance, I'll call it, will be probably gated. He doesn't want to discontinue it, because once you do, you never get him back from the state.
Right.
This will be the primary access for the storage unit in the office building, which will probably get repurposed, either a commercial office, or maybe retail. Both are allowed in that zone. So this will be the primary access point. There's very good visibility north and south again there. Where the middle entrance is kind of restricted, you can't see very well towards Bangor from that middle entrance.
Is there another entrance dedicated to that existing office thing?
Yeah, there's just a, where they put the dumpster behind the garage, behind the office.
Is that going to be maintained, or used, or abandoned?
Be maintained for that purpose now, but for anybody coming and going to that facility, they'll come in this way.
That's not a customer business access then?
No, no.
Strictly a maintenance kind of thing?
Just a maintenance. And I think it's signed, do not enter maybe even, even now.
Okay. Were there going to be any proposals for like, security fencing or anything like that around the storage units?
Yes, absolutely. Be lighting, security gates, fencing.
Separate from the duplexes?
Yes.
Maybe some sort of barrier that-
You know, primarily the entrance and exit to the duplexes will be this new road, just to keep the uses separate, so that traffic isn't mingling.
Oh, right, so that's a, that big loop right there is an existing road.
That exists.
That's not-
It won't exist when we're done with this project.
Okay, good.
Even though we will maintain two-way traffic through here for fire trucks to come and go. That road will be engineered to encourage all the residential people to use that access, whether signage and a, you know, a fire gate here, that a fire truck can just run over essentially on the way in if they have to.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
Well, Steve, the current house, I thought I read someplace that, is the house going to be used like for an office for the storage business?
Potentially, yes.
I mean, is it possible to, instead of using that gravel drive, because I think now you're on the other side of the hill, and it creates a little bit of visibility. Could you access the house through the southern?
We will, yeah. To access the office, you'll come in here.
Yeah, I thought you said that you were going to maintain that entrance where it says gravel drive.
We will, just to service the dumpster that goes with that office building. Basically, all that's used for.
Is there any way, I mean, I like consolidating entrances, I mean, there's four. I'd just see that one disappear if the dumpster could be accessed from the main entrance?
I'll discuss that with the landowner. I don't believe there's anything in the ordinance explicitly compelling us to give that up, but it isn't used very much. And the safest way in is definitely the center.
All right, so it's a sketch plan, there's no decision being made, but this is an opportunity for the board to maybe express some of their concerns about the project when it comes to us again?
Well, just a question for Steve is what considerations were made before? I see the shoreline zoning, I believe that puts that Patrick Brook.
Gil Patrick Brook, yes.
I see the configuration of the units there in relation to the bog, which I understand is not part of the zoning. Why did, why did you choose that location on that lot? Can you explain that?
The location for those duplexes?
Yes.
It was just more remote, and you won't see them from the street.
Right, sound. But as far as clearing, I mean, we're still going to maintain that hundred-foot shoreline zone, so as far as yards- But as far as clearing, I mean, that, we're still gonna maintain that, that 100-foot shoreline zone, so as far as yards and whatnot?
Yeah, it's 75 foot setback from the stream.
Right.
And the, the access will be to the front of the buildings, so it'll be just a wooded buffer back there.
Well, there's some language in that lot description that we need to maintain that.
I'm sure it'll be part of our stormwater plan to maintain that wooded buffer.
Is, I, it's hard to tell the scale from this, but is there a way to like, buffer the storage units from the residence buildings? Is it, is there still standing vegetation there or has it been cleared?
There's a few trees in here, and I'm sure Chad will dress it up nicely. He, he's gonna design the landscaping plan, which will be part of our submissions.
Okay.
We'll, we're gonna dress up this strip along the road, between the road and the buildings nicely. You'll still see the buildings, because that's what, sounds the buildings, you gotta see them. But he'll, he'll landscape that.
Just reading through the TRT. Public water and sewer. Project will be hooked up, oh, except for the office. City sewer is forced main, pressurized. Tring templates, public water. Okay. What else can we ask?
I, I have a question, maybe you guys can clear it for me, or maybe Michelle. Storage units usable, I mean, part of the urban zone, are you allowed to have them? I couldn't find anything in there that said storage units. The only thing I found was bulk storage and it says no.
Urban zone. Good question.
Go to the definitions and look at personal services.
No, it's on the actually?
I, I read the, the brief description of the urban zone. It was supposed to be retail and heavy dense residential. And this isn't retail. So I was just, I mean, I know there's?
It's on the warehousing?
I know there's a
Urban zone.
A use in here called commercial use, which is yes, but that's kind of a broad term.
Commercial industrial uses, bulk storage. Convenience.
And personal use.
I think the way I looked at it, it's in the urban?
Yeah.
Article three.
It says, um...
Where, where are you looking?
It says warehouses, yes. I think warehousing is probably comparable.
What page number are you?
I'm in, I'm in article three, page seven.
Three, page seven. And you're looking at warehousing or do you?
Well, now I'm gonna go to the, the definitions.
Oh, so you're gonna look up one of these things in the definitions?
So warehousing is facilities characterized by extensive warehousing, frequent heavy trucking activity, or fully enclosed storage of material.
So I, I'm not seeing warehouse.
I'm not seeing warehousing, no.
In the?
It's on, it's right here.
Oh, warehouse, very last page, page eight, at the very bottom, warehouse, thank you.
And then it's?
And then definitions.
Yes, I couldn't find it. I just wanted to make sure.
And then commercial use? Under commercial use?
It's a definition.
And back to the definition, so I go back in for between three and 14?
14.
It's an art.
Yeah, the definitions.
Oh yeah, this one I cleverly marked, definition.
Commercial, elanous activity, elanous, which is, um...
It might be a personal services, Michelle.
Personal services?
Well, it, it does, it does say buying and selling of goods or services.
And that's it, you provide a service when you rent a space like that.
Yeah, because you don't own, you don't own the structure, you're just getting used to it.
I think you can argue it in several manners.
No, I, I just didn't see it and wanted to make sure.
So just for, if, if a use is not necessarily there, black and white, what you do is you, you look, you compare it to other similar uses.
Yeah, I didn't see the warehouse one.
It would have similar impacts.
Yeah, I didn't either.
Which is, okay.
I believe this property is in the same zone as the use you allowed a little further up the Bangor Road recently, and the expansion of the existing storage facility.
Oh, right, the, the green and white buildings, yeah. All right, are there other questions? Anything that we would like to say to the applicant before he comes back to us? This is a public meeting, would anybody, any member of the public like to speak? If you could step up to the podium and state your name, please?
Nadine Lewis again. I just wanna be clear, how many entrances are you proposing? I see a bunch of different ones there. How many will there be in the end?
Two primary entrances and one auxiliary entrance, I'll call it.
Okay. Do you guys have any, is there rules that they have to have a traffic study proposed on like, how much?
Yeah.
If?
There will, so there will be a traffic study?
Yes.
Because just, I just wanna say that I live on that road.
Well, I go by there too, myself.
Terrifying, terrifying.
It's, it's tied to the use, and what they'll do is look at the use that they're proposing, and they'll come up with some numbers.
Okay.
And then they'll look at the impact of that on the road and make a determination.
Okay, one more quick question. This, what is this scale here? The, the wetland?
I'm sorry, what?
The scale on the wetland?
Oh, there's, in the lower right-hand corner, there's a little picture that is meant to help you?
Well, I just can't figure, can somebody answer that question?
Sure, the applicant might be able to help us with that.
What dimension are you?
Well, this, this, these buildings are awfully close to this.
Yes.
Do you know how many feet that might be?
Within a few feet.
Okay, I, I just gotta state this, and I don't know if this is okay for me to state this. That's of great concern for me, because where I live right now, and I've called your office a lot of times, where the, the people were allowed to build, and I live like, three feet from wetland. Bad idea. Very, something you wanna really take under consideration.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else like to speak on this matter? I will close the public hearing.
I'd like to clarify something.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I don't want Nadine to, to think that a traffic study per se is gonna be done. Traffic counts will be provided, and depending on the traffic counts, that may trigger a traffic study or not trigger a traffic.
Oh, yeah, we might not be using the correct terminology, but yeah, what, what she said. They're gonna look at that use and how much it generates and then make a determination.
There's engineering manuals that prescribe uses and prescribe how many trips it generates, and from that, then a decision is made if a traffic study is going to be done or not. The city has the ability to have a lower threshold, but where, rarely does it, we really, we've never needed to use that. The, the idea is not to lower the level of service beyond a certain, it's, it's to maintain a similar level of service on that road and, and make sure that everything will be flowing as it was flowing before, if, in a nutshell. Because I just don't want to leave Nadine thinking that there will be a full-blown traffic study done at that site when there may not be. Because housing is an extremely low generator, and I believe that, um, storage is also a low generator.
We'll get those details in their preliminary plan.
Is there any interest at this point in a site walk?
Um, I don't know, we'll ask the board.
Have a big project and?
I'd be interested in going out and looking at it. Any other board members? Interested in setting up a site visit for this project?
I mean, I've, I've been on this site where the old landscape business was and?
There's two.
That's up to you, I just offered before.
Yeah, I think, I think there'd be some interest. Do we need a certain number of people to commit? Do we need to vote on that?
The site visit? You don't, I guess you don't really need a quorum, because you're not going to be making any decision or having any substantial conversation. But it's always, um, I don't know if you need a quorum or not. It's a meeting, to open a meeting, you need a quorum, you know. John O usually says you don't need a quorum for a site visit.
Okay, yeah, so I'm not interested in, in having to have a quorum. If it's only a couple of us, then we'll be a committee.
So, am I scheduling a site visit or am I?
Yes, we are, I believe.
We're scheduling a site visit?
That would be an answer yes to your question, we would like to do a site visit.
So, we will?
Do we do that now or do that internally after the meeting?
I think, well, we always notify, well, the, what do you wanna do? How much in a rush are you?
Oh, no, I'm not in a rush.
We'll schedule it later, way easier.
All right, then. So, that's the end of that item. Unless there's anything else. All right, the next item on the agenda is a modification to December 5th, sorry, September 5th, 2012, approved and recorded major subdivision plan and a reapproval of a non-established lapsed major use site development plan titled Beckworth Pines, Beckworth Pines, for Down East Main Property Management. The approved plan consists of two four-unit apartment buildings, and the proposed modification is for four two-unit apartment buildings on a 2.3 acre parcel off Route 3, High Street via Beckwith Court, tax map Lot 1647-3 in the commercial zone. Is there someone representing the applicant?
Uh, yes, sir, Mac Harriman.
Yes, sir.
Life and plans are big.
And what we've got is, as you stated, we've got an amendment to approve a project from 2012. The differences of the buildings, the original one had two large buildings with eight apartments in each one. We've split into two, or actually four different buildings with two in each one, and basically almost the same footprint. Just a minor difference. What we've done is we've updated, I have one of the pages in the thing here, the new application, purchase sale, corporate registration. There's a letter of financial capacity, a traffic study was updated. Stormwater management was completely redone, two new specifications of the rule. Soil erosion and sedimentation control plan was updated as well. We've got a letter from the sewer department, the water department, and the fire department. Some of those are still in the works, finalizing what's gonna be on the final plan. Some of the details in design. We got a new stormwater permit by rule application is in. We've got associations and covenants is, is still being updated, but we'll have a new, we're basically using the same one that was already approved, just gonna change the names on the wording. And we have maintenance updates and, and then the drawings you've got in your packet there, this, I put on the very end of it, a copy of the original development so that you can compare the two. We also just did a, a little bit of an update with a few items on the application, permit application. Couple of small differences, and that's in the last page, you probably put that in as a, as an insert.
Yep.
With a copy of a plan with a few notes that we updated as well. And I guess, any questions you may have? I've got the, my client is here as well as the engineer from Head of Fine Engineering, so we can perhaps answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. So it seems like there's quite a few changes. It's not just a minor revision, so I guess we do need to look at this. This, what is our approval for? Is it to reapprove final?
I, because there was substantial changes, I listed it as tonight you're doing a completeness review. And it's gonna have to come back for final, because this is not
Okay.
any small change.
All right, I agree. So this, what we're gonna look at tonight is, is the application complete? Can we make a determination on completeness from materials that have been submitted? Do you feel like there's anything that, that might be missing, something people wanna know more about? Does any, does anybody have any direct questions for the applicant right now?
One out of curiosity, basically, why are you going from two four-units to four two-units? That's my client's, uh, just kinda curious.
Do you own the land yet?
A purchase-sale agreement.
You, you're still in a contract? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, is it possible to people to speak in the microphone so we can make sure that we can create minutes?
Uh, sure, we'll make that the rule from now on. If you wanna say something, please step up to the microphone and state your name.
Or this way, you can sit at the table since he's, yeah.
Or you can sit at the table, because there's a handy microphone right there.
You will make the minute maker happy.
Hi.
Is that the secretary?
Oh, yeah, the secretary. Uh, so are there questions that the city has for the applicant?
Yeah, I have a couple, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
When we had the TRT meeting, Mac, we kinda hashed back and forth through the sewer department on whether you're gonna keep this a private right of way or, or make it a public right of way. I noticed it's still 10 feet aside, is that gonna stay as a private right of way?
We're negotiating right now to make it a third.
Okay, okay.
So that is our intention. We've contacted everyone, and there was a general note put on there stating that was gonna happen, but we're pushing that.
Okay, okay.
So we're looking to have a 30-foot easement, and the city will take the sewer line over.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanna make sure we're still on, and I'm fine with the, with the stormwater. I notice, I think we'll, I'm gonna talk to Mike Harris from the sewer department, because I, the letter I've got here is, you know?
Yeah, it's general about.
Oh, yes.
I don't even know who it is.
Well, I, I made them copies, I didn't realize it was coming out like that. But I think we're gonna, I'll, I wanna figure out where, where we come up with that figure though, but we'll, we'll check that. We might be able to do better on that. And Mikey, you have a question?
Yes, the other thing, as, as we've talked in the past with, with the applicant, was the, and dealing with Reggie from the water superintendent, is connecting into the existing water line that serves Beckwith Woods, and then supplying over a property line to a second or a different owner, as to whether they have, and whether they, what, what, whether they've got permission to hook into that private water line or not. And that's something that we've been dealing with them on that. If that's something you can talk about.
Yeah, what, what I've done is our easements, I've worded such that they give us the right to come across all of those existing easements. I wanna talk to the, the adjoints so, and come up with an agreement and a maintenance issue, so we can have some written. So I'm still, right now, in the, in the process of doing that. So that's my intention, to have that, be able to show you the proof of, the capacity to come across that line and use that and permission and do a maintenance agreement with them as well.
So what needs to be demonstrated is that the applicant has the right to hook it into a private line? Is that correct, Mike?
Right.
I, I believe so. The other thing that I, and I'm not speaking for the water department, because I don't know that much about it, and I apologize, but if you have a second group that hooks onto that water line, it becomes a public line. That might be something you might wanna be checking with the water department as to, if you hook into that one line, you're now servicing two separate groups. to, if you hook into that one line, you're now servicing two separate groups, that, that becomes a public line, and I'm not sure how that works.
Is, is there a different standard for that, once it becomes public?
We'll talk with the water department on that.
Yeah, he's given me some input, and I was going to meet with him before I submit anything else, so that's my. And also, I'm going to be with Mike Harris again, too.
Yeah.
Is there a note?
Those things need to be cleared up.
So, while we're on water, Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Is, did you, I did not see that there was a note on the plan pertaining to the requirement that booster pumps will be installed, so to ensure a 20 PSI?
I didn't, but what I did is I put on the last bit of info to add to this, I had written it in this.
Okay, so what we asked is that there be a note on the plan to that effect, so that, that follows through?
Right.
So what's going on is, again, I don't want to work for the water department either, but, um, under PUC, they have to provide 20 PSI, and although they think they can provide 20 PSI, there's going to be some issues, because there is some pressure issues, I believe there, volume or pressure pressure?
What they, one, I guess, talking with the water department, they want to make sure that the booster pumps that are put in are approved by them prior.
Prior.
To you putting them in, because they don't want you be, they don't want you pulling a draft on that line, um, and causing a problem there. So they want to make sure that what you're putting in, that they'll approve prior to that. I know that's what Reggie wanted to be, be seen, so.
So what I can do is talk with him, and we can be, arrange that, but I can also put the note on the plan with the correct wording, because I had kind of a mix of things, and I didn't want to stick something on the plan.
That is correct, yeah.
My intention is to put a note on the plan.
Yeah, it should be prior approved by them.
If we just, um, follow the TRT, it says water department need easements to travel over access, so that echoes what Mike just said. And five-by-five easements around all valves, so that needs to be shown on the plan. You need to be a note on the plan that you're going to, that the department's requiring booster pumps to ensure 20 PSI, and that the pumps need to be approved, the design approval needs to be approved, approved prior to installation. That's water-related matter, and it's on the.
So the, the approval would be something in writing from the water department? Is that, would that be the best way to get that approval?
Is what?
To, to get that in writing from the water department? I'm, I'm looking at the ordinance.
It's on the TRT memo?
Right. Looking at the, the ordinance, says the developers should provide a written statement from the water department, that adequate water for both domestic and firefighting can be provided?
Yes.
And they have that.
They have.
But the problem is, when you go to a second story, you lose pressure.
They only have to buy 20 ounces per day. But as you go, you increase elevation, you lose pressure.
All right, so this is over and above that, written.
To ensure that 20 PSI is going to be.
Okay, so that would be appropriate to add to the plan.
But when they approve pumps that they say we need to use, we'll get a written statement from them, put it in the application, and whatever note they want on the plan, we will put on.
So these items are not necessarily completeness items?
Okay.
But they're very important to us.
All right, so they'll be mandatory for final? Okay.
For the water in the sewer.
I mean, along the same lines of the maintenance agreements, is, is there going to be some type of agreement with Beckwith Court? I mean, you're, you're sharing the road coming in, as far as maintaining that road, plowing that road? Yeah, that's a note on the plan to do with that. Okay. But also, um, I guess it's C1, your snow, snow storage, like on the right side, about in the middle, the line goes over on Beckwith Court.
What was the question then?
Well, it appears that you've got a, a space lined out for snow storage, which actually goes over onto the neighbor's property.
Oh, the snow storage?
Yes. We could easily shift that to be told on hours, notice this is the snow storage.
Yeah, just, just pull back that one.
Could be shaved, shaved. Well, I, you know, I would think that Beckwith Court may have an issue with that, I, I don't know if you're going to share snow storage area, or, or what, but, I mean, it. See, we're, we're also going to have a 30-foot easement, uh, right now, we, we have that sewer line, we have an easement across that all the way into our property, so even that, the bit of snow goes right over into that easement. But we're going to have a 30-foot easement, mostly 20 feet of it on our property. But we can shift that, we can.
It looks like there's plenty of room for snow storage without getting onto the neighbor's property, we'll just adjust that line.
We'll shift that.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other concerns from the board? Items that you think might be missing or not complete at this point? This is a public meeting, if any member of the public would like to stand up and comment on this. Seeing no one, I will close the public meeting.
So, I have a question.
Yes.
There was a lighting waiver requested in the previous application, are you still asking for that lighting waiver?
Yes.
Okay, are you asking for a lighting waiver from, are you asking for a waiver so you don't have to submit a lighting plan, but you're still going to meet it, or you're asking for a waiver from the lighting requirements? Are you going to submit a lighting plan, let's just rephrase this?
Well, we've, we've already got lights shown on here, and some information on lighting fixtures already on this plan.
Are you providing a lumen plan, a foot candle plan?
Is that the one we've got, the illumination plan?
Yeah, we have a photo of it.
I think we've got it, yeah, we've got it in here.
So you're asking from, uh, what is, what, your wa, so therefore, what's the waiver you're asking?
I, I'm not actually sure, I remember when I talked to you about it, you suggested that may be better for us, but I'm not sure what.
Okay, so we're going to need to fair, fair, figure out what is the waiver for.
Okay.
So there is a lighting plan.
So, I thought I saw.
On the photo message plan, there's a table that shows that we requested a waiver.
Did I, did I miss that, was that a supplemental package?
So.
It was?
Project falls into this, applicant proposes to move this.
I was overwhelmed, sorry I missed that.
I guess my only question about the lighting is the space between the two areas of buildings, there's a, there's a gap there, is there, what are those, those two buildings, are there windows or doors or any in between those two, what does that look like?
Basically just blank walls between the building. I mean, just the space between the two?
Yeah.
There's nothing there.
There's no access or anything?
I mean, there's.
There's actually, there's going to be, there's going to be basement access on that, on the backside of each building.
On the backside?
Yeah.
Somebody could walk between those two buildings then to get to that? Or sidewalks all the way around it, or something, I mean?
It's not, no, not sidewalks, just, like I said, just, just basement access for storage, for each tenant.
Like a Bilco door kind of thing?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so we have a lighting plan. Are you concerned with that, that we can ask them about for next time around? It's, it's complete, it has the plan, if there's any questions about the, I don't know, the quality of the plan, just so we can share that with them before the next meeting?
I would like Alina to present the stormwater management plan.
I'm sorry, what?
I would like Alina to present the stormwater management plan.
Okay, the narrative and the objectives?
Well, just overall, how it's going to function, and how it meets, um, the ordinance, and just, so she runs through the, they're proposing some impervious parking space, pervious parking spaces, but I don't think they're going to create them, just, I think this would be of interest to.
Okay, yeah, you could run through that for us, please?
Sure. So, the site is providing, is meeting general, the city's general standards and flooding standards, um, by means of a view, a vegetated underdrained soil filter in the kind of centrally located, um, between the dwelling units, and also roof drip line filtration along each side of the buildings themselves. It's providing treatment for, um, for 97% of the impervious area created on the site is going to be treated through these, uh, these methods, and over 88% of the total developed area will be treated through these same treatment methods. So it meets DEP and city ordinance, as far as stormwater treatment is concerned, and there'll be no net increase in runoff from the property.
Okay. Were there specific questions about the?
No.
The discharge points, or the flow? Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I do have a question, I'm sorry about that. Do you know how it is?
Okay, open that door again, come on in, what?
The, um.
What is it?
The proposed additional pervi, pervious parking spaces. So, these are not planned to be built, is that correct?
My understanding is that they're just, if they're required, if they need additional parking, but they're not going to be considered impervious area, they're going to be pervious pavers.
But the idea is not to let people park on just regular grass and compacted heart, the idea is that this pervious system would be placed to create park.
If, if needed for additional parking, correct?
But you are providing one and a half parking spaces per units, correct?
We have on the plans, we're showing 16 parking spaces.
I think there's eight for each building, I mean, eight for.
Each two building.
And the intent is this is all going to be paved, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure that everybody's aware of.
Okay. All right, so, uh, the waivers. Would the board like to deal with these waivers in any way? First, or do you think that, that they retain, are they asking for?
Is there even a waiver? I mean, we've got the lighting plan.
Right, at this point, there's not a request for some sort of not being submitted, so.
So is there a request for waiver, or not a waiver?
There's, there's a request for the standard to be met.
So they did submit it, so.
Yes, so it's all there. Okay, so, having gone to that point then, is there a motion regarding completeness of this application?
Is it complete?
Yeah, that's really what we need to decide, is, do we have a complete package here? Is there any parts of this that you think are, are missing, that the applicant has not provided?
Let's start that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose, um, to approve the modification to a September 5th, 2012, approved and recorded made subdivision plan and reapproved of a non-established slash lapsed major use site development plan titled Beckworth Pines, uh, for, for completeness, for final, um, approval at our next board meeting or next upcoming meeting.
Okay, is there, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, um, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
So, you have my logs assigned. So you can do a motion to adjourn after?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting after the my logs are signed. Is there a second?
I think who seconded?
I did.
So Roger seconded, because I can't hear when it looks, and then.
All those in favor?
Okay, all of them.
You're unanimous.